Now, they wanted me to make this more lively, so I told them it was up to them. But first of all, I can't thank you, all your teams enough for the mega scrubs. I was over there Saturday, I think many people have, and what you do for the community to make our community clean and nice, and the opportunity in the different categories and the work you go to to make those mega scrubs really impactful on behalf of the council. I'd just like to thank all of you for their work. And with that, we'll read the proclamation. Whereas public works personnel operate and maintain infrastructure and provide services essential for everyday life and economic growth while providing leadership in floods, snowstorms, and natural disasters. Whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of infrastructure services and maintenance programs such as traffic, sanitation, sewers, streets, forestry, and wastewater reclamation. And whereas the protection and the preservation of the area's natural resources for the benefit of future generation depends on the sustainability of these services and programs. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these functions, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and the skill of public works and engineering officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the departments of public works and engineering are materially influenced by residents' understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Connie Boson, on behalf of the city council and the residents of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim May 18th through the 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. With that, would anyone like to speak? I'd like to call to order the Des Moines City Council meeting for May 19, 2025. Please take the roll.
Boson.
Here.
Simonsen.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a forum.
Item number two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. And on tonight's agenda, on the consent, 4KK is withdrawn by the applicant. Forty-two is withdrawn by city manager for further study. On the regular agenda items, number 50 is updated and to continue the hearing until June 9th, 2025. Fifty-eight is withdrawn, item continues to June 9th, 2025. Fifty-five is updated, it's an ordinance. Fifty-five A is added, final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by Scott Sanders, city manager, requires six votes. And fifty-seven is an updated speakers list.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is number three, approving the consent agenda. Those are items three through forty-seven in tonight. Number five, Coleman and Voss vote no. Twenty-four G and twenty-four H, Simonsen has a conflict. Twenty-five, Coleman would like to speak. Twenty-six, Mandelbaum, conflict. Thirty-eight, Coleman would like to speak. I just, as a reminder, these are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules. Council requests an item to be removed to be considered separately.
And I'll just note, it's appearance of conflict rather than just conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Next item, we'll start our hearings on item forty-eight, on vacation of air rights within a portion of Ingersoll Avenue right-of-way adjoining 3711 Ingersoll Avenue, and conveyance of a permanent easement for airspace above city-owned property to Ingersoll Theater LLC for $3,200. A is first consideration of ordinance above. B is a final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by Connor Delaney owner requires six votes. We have Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak up to 10 minutes maximum. Anyone wishing to speak to this item?
Seeing none, I'll move item forty-eight, forty-eight A and forty-eight B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is forty-nine, on vacation of surface rights within a portion of Euclid Avenue right-of-way adjoining 515 Euclid Avenue, and conveyance of a permanent easement for service building encroachment on city-owned property to 515 Euclid LLC for $50. A is first consideration of ordinance above. B is a final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by Connor Delaney owner requires six votes. Seeing, anyone wishing to speak to this?
Seeing none, I'll move item forty-nine, forty-nine A and forty-nine B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Seems like we need to project some words, one.
Motion carries.
Two no.
Item fifty, on request from Iowa Pacific Processors, Inc., Mike Everett, officer, and the city of Des Moines to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from business park to industrial, and to rezone parcels located in the vicinity of 2606 Sunset Road from EX mixed-use district to limited I-1 industrial district to allow expansion of an existing industrial use, and to continue the hearing until June 9th, 2025.
I'll move to continue the hearing until June 9th, 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item fifty-one, on request from the Simmons Properties, Michael H. Simmons and Linda G. Simmons, to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential within a neighborhood node to community mixed-use within a neighborhood node, and to rezone 3018 East University from N-5 Neighborhood District to MX-3 Mixed-Use District to allow expansion of an existing drive-through restaurant. A is the first consideration of ordinance above. B is a final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by applicant requires six votes. And first would be the parties and interests, the applicant for rezoning and those within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned will be given up to five minutes to speak. Second would be Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this?
Seeing none, I'll move item fifty-one, fifty-one A and fifty-one B.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item fifty-two, on application to Iowa Economic Development Authority for community development block grant funds to repair, prevent, respond to the coronavirus, CDBG-CV, council communication number twenty-five dash two oh five. Jermaine comments from the general public, up to two minutes, two minutes per person to speak, 10 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I'll just call out Chris Johansson and his staff for getting this taken care of, this additional $300,000 to the Central Iowa Shelter. It's one of our biggest shelters, so hopefully this will help with maybe some different programming and some different things like that. So I'll move item fifty-two.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item fifty-three, on amendments to chapter 134 of the Des Moines Municipal Code defining camping and emergency shelter as temporary accessory uses to a place of worship use. Council communication number twenty-five dash two oh six, A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person, up to 10 minutes to speak. I just wanted to also say, on this, we are trying to get clarity, and if you want to come up and speak, then we can have maybe one of our staff explain what this is, because I think there's been some confusion on what we were trying to accomplish with this. So.
Good afternoon, Garland Armstrong, representing Ward Two. And I, I think this is a finally great idea, especially for those who, who needs a place to live, because especially where the homeless situation is, because I think the time is right now, because what will happen if, like they said, when, when summer-like weather is coming and, so that they don't want to get extreme heat and have to end up in a hospital, so they need somewhere where they can cool, where they can cool down, and then when winter comes at the end of this year, they, they definitely need a warming place. So I think this is a good start in making sure that, that they can get their, they can get their bodies up to date and everything so that they don't have to be in the streets for, for either winter or summer, because this, because they really need it. It's long overdue for them, and, and as good advocates, we need, we need something like this, because this is happening not only where we are, but across the nation too. So I think this is a good pilot program for it, so maybe others need to, need to holler and come up, adapt this idea so that, what they could do to make sure about it, and also make sure to come up with a long-term part of it, so people who, who needs to be on that waiting list, so they can find a place to live. So I think this is a good pilot program for it, and, and a great start to help out. So I'll be glad to have any questions or comments you have.
Okay, thank you, Garland.
My wife.
Yeah, I also think this is a good opportunity to help the homeless, because a lot of these churches are run like big, huge outdoor areas. For example, Hope Lutheran Church on the east side, they have like a big, huge area in the back where they can hold a whole bunch of homeless people. This would probably be a good idea too for this emergency shelter. You should update it to make it shelter outdoors, too, because a lot of these churches in Des Moines have big, huge backyards, unlike the ones in Chicago where there's nowhere to put tents at, unless residents are going to complain about it. I think this is a good idea to help the homeless, because a lot of them don't know how to start, and a lot of them have really bad criminal records where the landlord won't even allow them to even rent. Thank you.
Could I get your name, please?
Heather Armstrong, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Heather. Not that we don't know, but just for the record. So if you'd like to come up and give your name and your ward or your address.
Okay. Good evening, my name's Carol Frederick, and I live at 3663 Grand Avenue in Des Moines. I speak tonight as a member of St. John's Lutheran Church downtown and its unhoused ministry team. Our team and I are opposed to this item, number fifty-three. As a downtown congregation, we regularly encounter people experiencing homelessness who seek refuge in our courtyard, assistance from us, and occasionally we provide inside space during extreme weather, during the day only, not at night. We don't own a parking lot, we use principal parking lot, a lot of downtown churches don't have a lot of space. So let's be clear, a church like ours is not equipped to provide emergency overnight shelter or extensive camping. We lack the space, funding, training, and staffing to safely or sustainably meet this need. Thirty years ago, we were one of the downtown churches that banded together to form Churches United out of necessity. Several people had died on the streets. That work led to the creation of Central Iowa Shelter and Services, which downtown congregations support. CISS serves our city with professionalism and compassion. We should not have to return to an era when churches were the only option. If Des Moines truly wants to address homelessness and unsheltered folks, it must increase support for the nonprofits that are already doing this critical work. That means increased funding for shelters, expansion of emergency shelter. It means expanding affordable housing, supportive housing, all the good things that are in the Polk County Plan, and housing options for people who can't access shelter, the traditional shelter model, couples, people with pets, LBGTQ folks, and those with mental and physical health challenges. Item fifty-three gives the appearance of action but fails to offer a meaningful solution instead of putting responsibility.
Thank you for your comments. I think the, one thing came out of our conversation from last year, with this was brought up as an option, other cities have done it, so it was, it's not that anyone has to do it. We're trying to get clarity for if somebody is doing it. Some people are offering services, so I don't know if anyone wants to add anymore.
I just, I would, go ahead.
Go ahead, I just want to make it clear, this is something that's voluntary.
Right, no one is, and it's not just.
We're not making every church a homeless shelter or anything, this is only if churches want to participate, we're giving them the means to be able to do that, which is what they asked us to do months ago.
And to clarify what can be done, too, so there's consistency between, so, Councilman Coleman.
Just a couple of things. First off, thanks for the work of St. John's and what you do. My, my, my church will be there Thursday for the noontime meal with Connections Cafe, and I, I try and be there every month, and what you do is important. I think Joe and the mayor have been clear, most of the, most of the concerns I've heard from residents have believed that the coverage makes it like churches have to let people camp on their grounds, and that's not it at all. You know, pastors and congregations would choose, there's limitations in the code and requirements in the code for what, by which it would happen, so that the churches and neighbors can, can work cooperatively and effectively. The goal here is not to expand camping in the city, but it's to solve homelessness, getting people out of homelessness, and a lot of times that's connecting them to groups of people like congregations that care about them and want to help them find housing and move on. And that, that's been proven through the commitment of so many of our churches with founding of Churches United and, and others. So I, I want to make sure that that's, that's really clear. You also stressed to us that we have work to do. Just a minute ago, Councilman Gatto made a motion to, to fund with new services at Churches United or Central Iowa Shelter and Services, $300,000. There was additional funds for Catholic Charities, St. Joseph's Family Shelter. There was additional funds for Iowa homeless youth that serve a complicated and underserved population. Later, earlier on our agenda, we passed 11 different projects to support workforce housing tax credits for it. Earlier on the agenda, we passed $750,000 for affordable low-income housing on Sixth Avenue at the Town Hall Project. That just begins the series of things that we did tonight. And as the council knows, I've recounted these at other meetings, because every meeting we have a significant number of, of like agenda items where we're trying to do our level best to solve this issue, help people find housing, and build the kind of life we all dream for ourselves and others. And, and hopefully, this is a wrinkle that might be used somewhere by a congregation that really wants to help. You know, maybe it's one or two homeless individuals, but with the kind of services and support that can get them out of homelessness and into a better dignified life.
Councilman Mandelbaum.
All right, do you want to? So I, I appreciate the, the conversation. I, I appreciate the, the comments from, from St. John's. I, I will say, I was, I maybe shared some of the viewpoint in terms of initial skepticism. You know, I, I was worried that this was something to, to, to make it look like we're doing something. But I, you know, the more I thought about it, and as this developed, I see it as a tool, a very small tool. It doesn't mean a congregation has to, but there are a range of ways that congregations can engage, and in some respects, they can be a more efficient use of resources. So for example, this allows a warming or cooling center role, which is a very hard thing to scale up in existing sources, because it's used on an emergency basis, not a regular basis, and there, congregations really can be a part of the solution in a meaningful way. Now, part of this depends on what else we do, and congregations have had a very important role in both the housing conversation and how we address homelessness, both historically in this community, but I want them to have a role going forward as well. And my hope is that we broaden this. I, I know I've talked a couple times from council table about this idea of, you know, we're rezoning for this small purpose, but I think we should think about a broader housing discussion to talk about some of the, those long-term solutions, whether it just be increasing housing stock, or there have been congregations in, in this community that have built affordable housing on their campus or near their campus, and there are a lot of places as congregations either think about how they use existing space, or think about how they merge and consolidate. I, I think we should be taking steps to allow more types of housing, particularly on the corridors, at religiously zoned institutions. And I hope that can be part of this conversation, because I think that would also, again, it wouldn't be something that anyone would have to do, wouldn't necessarily be done by a lot of folks, but it would provide one more tool, and I think an important tool, for, for solving this. And it, it's again, one of those things, when I started looking at it, I, I learned the term Yigby, yes in God's backyard, because we wouldn't be the first community to do this or to think about that solution. Religious institutions, it's consistent with their values, consistent with how they contribute to solving problems, and I'd like to bring that idea here and see us figure out a way, you know, I, I'd probably take a more expansive view of that than, than maybe the rest of council would be comfortable with, but I'm pretty sure if we worked at it, we could come to a consensus on some things that we can start doing and see how they work. And I'd really like us to try and find that consensus as part of this broader conversation.
Councilman Voss?
Yes, and it probably, it.
Yes, and it probably, I'm, I believe it bears worth repeating again, this is voluntary.
Does anyone else want to comment?
Mayor, I'd, I'd like to make the comment. I think this is an excellent step. It's one of many to allow religious organizations to do what they believe that they can do. And I am aware of at least one church that has an immigrant family living in their building, a family that, whose funding was cut off and would be homeless. And we want that to be legal. I appreciate this, this step.
Yeah, thank you all. I think again, this is just another way to help. It maybe, and also for the ones that are doing it, to have consistency so we all are, you know, have the same kind of rules and guidelines so that there's no question of what you should be doing or what you could do. Because I think some people might do one part of it. They might do a cooling station or a warming station, but they won't do any of the other part. But this will give everybody, I think, a clearer definition of, of their direction and how they should proceed about it. So with that.
I'll move 53A in pursuant to Rule 42A. I'll waive the second and third reading.
Thank you.
I guess I, I wouldn't mind having, I mean, I think it's maybe worth having multiple readings. And I, my hope is that we could come back and discuss the other piece about some of the.
The housing?
Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in.
So we're just doing the.
No, I'm waiving the second and the third. You can vote now if you want.
It was to waive, so please.
I'll waive the second and the third.
Before, before I vote, I, I do, it'd be nice to complete this, but I do, I do support Josh's concept on the other. And so Matt, if you, if you could make sure we return with the plan, maybe, you know, maybe we get initial, you know, one-page white paper or something just on how it might work or how it's worked other places. Because I, I, I do think that there's, there's real merit in Josh's proposal.
Right. To me, it's a separate from this, but I think it's something we should look into. Okay, so please vote. Motion carries. Item 54 on Grayslake Park Sprayground Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receiving file bids, and designating the lowest responsive, responsible bidder as Minter Inc., Clinton M. Rhodes, President, $2,375,720.80. Council Communication Number 25-208. Where is it? Okay, A is approval of the contract and bond. The general public may comment only onto the plans, the specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or lower bidder, low bidder designation. Those will be the only comments to be considered germane. Two minutes per person. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
So I don't see anyone here, but I, I just want to, this is a great example. We always from this table talk about public-private partnerships, and this is exactly that. This entire project is funded with private donations and grants. There were multiple members of the council that, that helped raise these dollars. And, you know, also this, just another opportunity to acknowledge the, the work and the contribution that Rick Newman made to this community and to Grayslake in particular. And this is a small way to, that his legacy will live on, both in terms of the work that he did to make sure that, before he passed, to make sure that this project got done, but in also recognizing him with this project too. So this is just a great example, and it'll be a tremendous asset to one of the best parks, not in the city, but in this state. And it will continue to make it better. And it's that public-private partnership. This is a great, great example of it. So I'm happy to move this item. And I know, you know, several of, several folks were very much involved and deserve the credit for helping raise those dollars too.
Second?
It's been.
I'd like to just.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
That this is another great project that Friends of Des Moines Parks had a hand in, so.
We're very fortunate to have such kind, generous people in this community, so with that.
Even better. Fifty-four and fifty-four A.
It was fifty-four and fifty-four eight, right?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved in. Second, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The hearings are now over at 5:25. The next item is 25. Receive and filing the Good Neighbor Agreement between Monarch Apartments and the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. Council Communication Number 25-204.
I wanted to underscore this. I, we, we spoke about this maybe three months ago when we had some action to approve some additional funding for Monarch. The facility opened last week. It was a well-attended, lots of positive energy. But I wanted to pull this off, first off, to thank Chris Johansson and Heather Teminga who facilitated a process with the neighbors to make sure that everybody's eyes were wide open, that they tried to tackle and address potential problems before the problems came up. I would really encourage council to, to, to take a look at it. The, I think they did really good work. One of the people that I asked to serve on it, a couple of them sent me really nice notes, but, but one of them talked about how invaluable and fully engaged the neighborhood has been. The Anawom Monarch staff have been exceptional, dare I say, feeling reassured that they are welcomed to the neighborhood. Apparently, there's been a lot of misconceptions in various corners, and this process allowed those misconceptions to be addressed with a dose of reality. This person says, "I, I was involved in community citizen participation back to the 60s and 70s, model city days, and this reminded me of the value of getting folks around the table and talking about potential issues in constructive neighborly ways." I, I think this has been a really good process. I'm really happy for Monarch, and I think we are, I think we have solved some problems at a time. This came up in a conversation that Chris Johansson and I had about, we've both been a, well, we both came to the city, I think maybe the same year almost. And he, he said, "Remember that ethanol plant?" Which, it's hard to remember it because it never happened, but we, we had created this process to work with neighbors through that. I, I'll tell you, there's other projects, the Holiday Inn and Des Moines Supportive Housing, the, the Town Hall on Sixth Avenue. It's been suggested by some of the same partners here that we go through a similar process with Ellipsis, which is under construction not far away, to just bring neighbors together with the entities. And I, I think it's a really good model of citizen engagement and trying to be proactive. And I really appreciate our staff's perspective of always reinforcing that this was a two-way street. We, we want to make sure that the project exceeds, that, that they succeed in, in being neighborly and working well, but they also wanted to make sure that the facility was welcome to the neighborhood and looked for ways to include them as new residents. You know, these are their homes in the neighborhood, and I think this was a really positive process. I'll move it. I, I hope you take a look at it, and I hope that Matt, you and the city manager's office can extend my appreciation and our appreciation, but also look for additional ways to kind of use this process as a way to bring people together before, before problems arise. I, we have to have affordable housing in this town, but we have to have good affordable housing and projects that work. And when we have projects that don't work, it creates a problem for the next 10. And, and so this is a way to make sure projects work. I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in. Do you want to speak on this?
I, I just want to say something, and I, I think this is good, and I appreciate all the work from staff and the work that Councilmember Coleman has put in on this. And I, I agree, like, when we bring folks together and are proactive and have open lines of communication, I think that's really positive. I just want to provide a cautionary note so this doesn't become something else, and that is, I don't want the, a Good Neighbor Framework to become another sort of choke point or a way a project can, something else that we're layering on to a project that, that could cause it to, to fail or to provide a reason not to vote for something that would otherwise be a good project. That's not what's happening here, and so my hope is that I'm just providing a cautionary note.
Yeah.
And that's all this is, is a footnote.
Yeah.
But because I do think the communication is good and bringing neighbors together to get them more invested and more comfortable with these projects is a real positive, and that's a credit to the way this has worked out. I just don't want it to be a choke point to building good and important projects in the future.
Good. I, I totally agree with you. I, I will say that I, like, just along those lines, one of our principles was that we're not relitigating things that other citizen groups have looked at, whether it's planning and zoning or, or, you know, design, historic district commission, like, that's their lane. This is the lane for how are we going to communicate, solve problems together? And, and I think that's important so that we aren't taking too many bites of the apple and scaring off people from doing projects.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is the Third Amendment to Agreement for Tree Planting Services, Trees Forever Inc., and Authorizing City Manager to Execute. And I'll turn this back over to Councilman Coleman, who has to speak to this item.
Yeah, this won't take long. I, I will move it, but I also want to just voice, we've talked about this at several, we were hopeful of fast-forwarding the, the orchard that I think now is scheduled to be at Drake Park, you know, the kind of one-time talked about Eat the Triangle. And at our last meeting, we talked about trying to maybe make that happen in this season before it's too late to plant this year. So somebody's a better expert at that than I am, but I'd just like to make sure that if it is possible that we get that done. And, and I know there was going to be some conversations with Trees Forever, so appreciate it. This is a really good thing for the city, and I'll move it.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Item carries. The next item. Fifty-five. Amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code relating to parking fines and parking meters. A is the final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by Scott Sanders, City Manager, requires six votes.
I'll move 55, 55A.
It's been moved in seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 56, amending Chapter 46 of the Municipal Code to allow private streets to serve as compliant fire access roads. A is the final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by Fire Chief John Tikit. Requires six votes.
Move 56, 56A.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is our request to speak. At this time, we have one speaker. So if you want to state your name and ward.
Uh-huh. The name is Carolyn Ewan Hake Walker. I live at 411 Ingersoll Avenue. Before I talk about the Des Moines Climate Action Plan and the Sustainability Office, I would like the city council to consider a city council meeting rule during public comment time when the residents of Des Moines are presenting feedback and questions that there is no, no cell phone use that implemented during that time period. The comment time should be a priority for the citizens of Des Moines to come forward and talk to you about really important things, and I think listening is the priority there. Two, I would like to talk, of course, now about the Sustainability Office and the Climate Action Plan. Talk of Iowa, which is a daily talk show on Iowa Public Radio, very, very popular, presented a program last Tuesday called How Cities in Iowa Are Fighting Climate Change. Two sustainability managers from Ames and Iowa City presented how they as city manager, sustainability city managers implement their climate action plans. Unfortunately, Des Moines didn't have a sustainability manager to talk about Des Moines' climate action plan because our office has been closed. I know a motion has been made to hopefully find the funds for one sustainability manager. There's still time for that. If climate change and fighting climate change are important to each of you, a real priority, you will join with three other people on this leadership council and push for, for a sustainability manager. One of the characteristics of a sustainability manager is vision and looking at the future. And we know climate change is not going to get better, it's going to get worse. So we are, got to think about our future generation after generation. So I am asking again for you to talk with each other, talk with each other. Join with three others on this council and like Ames, like Iowa City, like Fairfield, Iowa, like Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and like Dubuque, Iowa, we have a sustainability office with one sustainability manager implementing our climate action plan called ADAPT. You all, most of you voted for that a year and a half ago. So come forward, let Des Moines be a leader in this. Next time that Charity Nebity has a sustainability manager, Des Moines can represent, can be there to talk about our plan too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'll move to receive and file 57A.
Second.
It's been moved in. Second, please vote.
And I'll just add to, to her point, I believe the city manager is working on both an RFP and that will address, I think, two different ranges of, of costs. And so I look forward to having that, that discussion as a council sometime in the near future, I hope.
It's been moved in seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
With that, seeing no other items, I, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor? Voice?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.
[inaudible].[1771.01]